I now call this meeting the Board of School Directors on this Monday, October 1st, 2018. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the Gettysburg area school district. Public comment is welcome and issues will be referred to the appropriate Board Committee or Administrator. Please know that issues will not be debated in this public meeting. Comments will be summarized in the official Board Minutes, which will be available by contacting the Business Office. Jane, all members are here except for Jim and he's excused. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, those of you that are here tonight, appreciate you coming out. We entertain a motion to accept the minutes for September 4th and September 17th.
Some move.
Second.
Alright, are there any deletions, corrections, additions to those minutes? Anybody find anything? Alright, hearing none. You vote along the minutes, acceptance of the minutes. Alright, everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright, minutes have been approved. Are there any notices and communications from anybody? No citizens' participation?
No sir.
Okay, and we have Board Committee reports?
Mr. President, the Policy Committee meets on October 9th.
Okay.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Financial Buildings and Grounds meets Thursday, 18th October at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you.
And the Citizens Committee will meet October 24th.
Alright, and let's see where we are here. Building Program Information, Dr. Perrin.
Just a couple of items. First one, for our Gettysburg area Education Foundation, the Board recently met as part of a strategic planning exercise that'll happen across multiple meetings. It's been beneficial for a lot of us, including myself, that stepped on a good train. And I think that it's been, it's been good having the conversation to just to review some of the shared beliefs and the types of things that the foundation can do to support the efforts of the district. So, the work's been fun. I've enjoyed hearing from the folks that are on the committee. I know that Carlos and Kathy have been a part of those meetings, are a part of that Board as well. So, look forward to future meetings with that organization. Last Wednesday, I attended the secondary version of the Run Hide Fight training that was offered by Officer Cooper. And did a nice job going through some of the video and a couple of the important pieces of information. It somewhat simplifies a lot of the different training that different groups have had in the past. The Run Hide Fight training is actually well supported by PA State Police and Homeland Security and Bureau of Investigations. So, we're excited that our folks have been trained in that. There's some make-up dates for folks that weren't able to hit those first two. And then we'll be doing drills in the various buildings with those twice this year. Once this fall, sometime prior to the middle of November. And then also again in the spring, probably March, April, May, around that time as well. That'll be good. Not only will it comply with that before, but it'll just put everybody on the same page. So, we plan on doing refresher trainings for those every fall. That way, we'll always catch new faculty and staff as part of those trainings. And then if the trainings themselves are updated, we'll be able to hit those as well. Seventeen point one on the agenda is an action item. And what we're doing there is we're seeking approval to basically earmark funds in case we're at a blink this coming summer where Ms. Herb and her team at the middle school are able to do exploration and evaluation of the current schedule. That'll probably be a multi-year process. So, although the consultant that's listed on the agenda would be in June of 19, that likely wouldn't, we wouldn't have any changes to the schedule to that following fall, which would be the fall of 2020. Because once you go through a scheduling process like that, you might come up with recommendations or changes in terms of maybe need a little bit more of language instruction in a certain place. And it might come to you with requests for staffing. So, that would happen during the normal budget process that following year. And this has been something, I know that in my first year here, last year Nancy and I had some conversations. They've been talking about looking at some scheduling efficiencies at the middle school for a while. There are also some things that Chris has been working with principals on in terms of STEM-related experiences for our students. And what happens is, you know, over time, if you make small tweaks to a schedule to fix that year's issue, over time, you end up with a giant conglomerate schedule that has all kinds of inefficiencies because you tweaked it a little bit over time to fix one issue. So, what this allows you to do is kind of blow the whole thing up, take a look at your priorities, and then kind of rebuild it from the ground up. So, when you do this, you don't change when school starts or when school ends. All that they would be doing is taking a look at what inside, inside the school day, how would they arrange the periods and those types of things. Because what you're really looking at when you're doing that, I did it three times during my 10 years as a middle school principal. You're really looking at what are your goals and what a student's schedule, the goals really are. You know, what do you want to become a part of, you know, a lifeless student in any given day? What's that look like? What are the priorities? You know, how's instruction, how's instruction look there? So, there are some things I think that they can take a look at in terms of how core subjects interact with Unified Arts subjects. Is there a way to schedule PLC, which is Professional Learning Community time for the staff to collaborate? And, you know, really, when you work with a consultant, it's really because you could go to 15 middle schools around the state and you'll find 15 different schedules. Because each one of those schedules is somewhat unique to the values and the things that are important in those buildings. So, it's tough to just take a schedule and lay it over top of your schedule and make it, and make it work. So, this is something that if their team isn't positioned to do it this summer, we'd want to be able to earmark the funds so that they're there. It would be out of the budget reserve. So, it'd be 10,000 out of, around 10,000 out of the $350,000 that are in budget reserve. And if Nancy's team in April finds that they're not ready to take that step yet, then we would not have them here and the money wouldn't be spent. But earmarking it allows us to at least get it scheduled. Because Mike Reddick is usually scheduled about eight or nine months out. I've worked with him in the past on middle school schedules. And I know that Chris Lay has worked with him on elementary schedules. I would say he wrote the book on scheduling, but it's really like six or seven. And he's done everything from texts on elementary schedules to middle school schedules, to high school schedules, to block schedules. He's really able to kind of take a lot of conversation and turn it into actionable steps for the folks that he works with. So, what we're asking for tonight when we get to that at seventeen point one really is to just earmark funds in case we're in a position to do that this summer.
So, do I assume then any discussion on this would occur when this comes up? Or we could entertain that now?
If we win the motion, become a motion, then we would discuss. Jane?
Did I hit pretty well, cover that there?
Yeah, that really summarizes it. The two years that I've been here, we've tweaked the schedule both years to hit a different priority. So, whether it was we worked PLC timing, we worked in an advisory period this year. But like Dr. Perrin said, when we are tweaking it, then we're kind of creating another maybe issue or obstacle because we use Mike Reddick's resources as a reference. But we really were trying to take a framework and just overlay it on our schedule where it would. I'm really excited to have him come in and consult and say kind of the reverse. Here are your pieces, this is what you have, now let's create something based on all your priorities. So, it really is exciting, the potential that maybe we can make some larger scale changes instead of continuing to tweak little things that then create another issue in the schedule. Because we know what our priorities are, we just have to, you know, get together on a team.
Thank you. Okay, on to business then. Personnel, Item 1 and Items 9.32 and including Item 9.5. Some move.
Second?
Alright, hearing none. Kathleen?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Bill? Carrie?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
I vote yes. Item 14, supplementals, Item 14.1. Some move.
Second?
I hearing none. Kathleen?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Fifteen Transportation, Items 15.1 and 15.2. Some move. I hearing none. Kathy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
I vote yes. Seventeen Business Finance, Item 17.1. This is the one on the consultant, right? Yes. Just a time to ask a few questions. Well, the test now has to give mothers, there's no motion and no second.
No move.
Is there a second? Al, we are open for discussion on Item 17.1, the consultant. Nancy, Jason, I'm just curious to learn a little bit more about what some of your priorities are. I know it's a, it's a building of a little bit less than 700 kids, three grade levels, programmatically at the middle school. Not that everyone receives the exact same thing, but it's not quite as complex when students have a lot of choice like they have at the high school level. I'm just a little concerned about spending 10, five for someone who, where we have a very capable team. I'm sure you and your team are very capable of putting together a pretty good master schedule that would probably address a lot of your priorities. I think it's great to bring someone like Mike in or someone else. There's a lot of good people out there to consult at some point. But with, it just seemed to me like 10, five was awfully expensive for someone to come in and do something that where there's a lot, it just seemed that there's a lot of information out there on really good master schedules for middle schools these days. But I don't know, again, I was just, Sunday night was the first time I saw this. So, that's why I was just really curious, again, with my background, 15 years as a middle school principal myself, about what some of those priorities are. I'm sure they're terrific.
I would say when we made our changes over the past two years, one of the big priorities was the PLC time, so the collaborative time. So, we worked that in. We also worked in a flex period in the morning to open up some time for previewing for learning support students. We got an advisory period in. So, and that was all using resources and kind of my experience with other middle school schedules. With us focusing on the STEM and I would say even the personalized learning, the blended learning, we have kind of this vision of down the road of opening that schedule so that we're not so siloed where they're going to an hour core and then they're going to a 45-minute Unified Art. We're learning about STEM and one of the big pieces of that is this cross-disciplinary collaboration. And the big roadblock we found in tweaking the schedule last year was that we could not, with the staff that we had, figure out how to open the UA block. It got locked in. We had to really run it the way it's running now because we just, we couldn't find a way to block schedule with it. We couldn't get it into 60-minute periods while preserving the PLC. So, our priorities are the PLC for the core teachers. But then we really want to open up this collaboration interdisciplinary-wise with this vision that if we could offer choice in the middle school, that would be one of my priorities, is that every kid doesn't have to take tech ed by the time they're in eighth grade. Every kid doesn't have to take art, that they're starting to hone in on their interests. And with the schedule the way it is, I just, we're not seeing how to open that up. I feel like we need an expert to come in and say, here are the people you have, here are your priorities. Now, how do we open it up and work all of that in?
That sounds really good. And I certainly can relate to whenever you tweak something, there's a ripple effect that you may or may not have seen or unintended consequences sometimes. So, I think it's terrific to bring someone in and so on. I just, I have a lot of faith in you all and your capacity to, that you're not going to be starting from scratch when this consultant comes in.
No.
You're going to be having something, really, a pretty good idea of what you would like to do and hopefully get his blessing, or he can maybe foresee some of those things because he's worked with a lot of other people.
Yeah, I think we have a good framework now. It's just like I said, we really hit that roadblock where we just couldn't see a way out of opening that up and getting more time. You know, we're finding when we're doing the blended learning that, you know, is 60 minutes the right amount of time? Are we offering enough or do we need to look, you know, at some more, maybe a modified block? So, I think we got as far as we could with what we had. We're really looking for a little more expertise and I think a vision that is different. That's more visionary as far as maybe it's not the same old middle school schedule, but that we're really looking for something unique and different to offer choice. My experience has been that we don't often offer a whole lot of choice in middle school. And I think that that's not, I don't think that's the way we want to go in the future.
I think Mike does a nice job of, I re-named master schedule twice with a team of people internally at my school. And then the third time, Kenny, we ended up with something a lot better because he was able to ask the questions that we didn't think to ask because we were stuck in our old framework. And I think it's, you know, like when you, whether you have a consultant for curriculum or you have a consultant for anything, you're really kind of bringing in their expertise in finding out kind of what your priorities are and then sharing possibilities with you. Because ultimately, it's not their schedule now. So, they're not going to say, here's what you should do. However, they'll provide several, you know, options that the middle school team can take a look at. And Nancy would involve, you know, a large number of people in that process, obviously. And, you know, one of the folks being involved would be, including one of the high school administrators, because there are students that go back and forth between those buildings that take courses. So, having that understanding as well is important when building it, understanding that we're, we have a secondary system that involves buildings beyond our middle school.
Jason, can I follow up to that? Once you used, I'm assuming the same guy we're talking about, at your middle school, how long did that last before you started tweaking things again?
I think it's still in place. I asked them, actually, we had a conversation today. They're going to reach out to Brian Ishler, who's currently the principal in the building where I was, to see, you know, to see where they are. But, you know, as important as his response is, what are your, what are your current priorities in your district? Because some of their shifts might be more due to priority changes in that not being the schedule didn't work, but it might be, we used to have a double English Language Arts block and now we need one, so that's going to cause a schedule shift. So, they're going to reach out just to see kind of where they are, you know, with it. But this is really, doing this now was just to make sure, to allow Nancy to tend to reschedule it because the schedule's so tough, but also earmark the funds. But, you know, as we talked about today, if our team's not in that position in, you know, March or April to take that step this summer, then we just wouldn't, you know, follow through with that. And the agreement with Mike allows you to, 60 days out, there are no fiscal ramifications for that.
I guess I'm just trying to understand, is this going to be a recurring thing? Is this a one and done?
I don't think it's, I mean, one and done for a while, I would think. Because when you rebuild it and put it all back together again, you want it to, hopefully it's, it reflects the district's priorities at that given time. So, hopefully the priorities are strong enough and stable enough that that schedule can stick around for a while. You might tweak something like a homeroom or advisory down the road because there's something else that you want to, that you want to do. But kind of the meat of it, or how you set it up, as a middle school principal, I had an eight-period day, I had a nine-period day. And then what we found was that nine periods was just too many transitions for early adolescence. You know, 11-year-olds, 12-year-olds, 13-year-olds, 14-year-olds, just way too many transitions during the day for them to handle. So, we brought Mike in, we actually ended up going with an AD hybrid block so that the kids had basically four classes or, you know, three cores a day. Eliminated some of the transitions. I'm not sure that that would serve Gettysburg to purpose, but that's just a little bit in terms of the journey that I had in working with Mike, you know, my previous role.
Alright, Jason, I, this may be directed towards Nancy, but I'll start with you. When did you guys, is there something tangible that happened here over, and I know with our visit with Nancy, her and the vice principal, I was aware we're tweaking or looking at a different type of schedule for quite some time, so I don't dispute that. At what point, and this is where I'll get to the meat of this, at what point did our staff or through you start to articulate or to consider an outside consultant that we're now looking at it tonight? When did this come about? Was this six weeks ago? Was it a week ago? I'm just trying to see the timeframe. We're looking at something where our staff that we have in place recognized that through whatever tangible means, that we needed to step outside.
I think that up until just a week or two, about two weeks ago, we just have always had conversations about wanting to look at the schedule. And her shared some of the things they tried doing with the schedule. And then I shared that Mike was a resource, was a middle school principal in the past. So, she, I kind of put her in touch, she reached out to Mike, started having conversations. So, just a couple of, just a couple of weeks ago.
So, would you say, I guess to Nancy, is there something tangible that you can point at? The system that we're currently under is, I don't want to use at fault, but it's, we're missing something under the system we're using now. Why do you now see the need to have an outside person to give us advice or give us a different direction?
Sure. The first year I was here, we did not have the PLC time. So, that was, that became a priority for the next year to try to work that time in. So, we did that. Last year, I had conversations all year. This has been something I've considered since I started here, just looking at going to team meetings, listening to staff, what do you need? And they really wanted the collaborative time, so we worked that in. As we moved into this year, so last year, we were considering what we were going to do. We had the collaborative time, we started to see the need for more of an advisory period. Teachers started expressing the fact that they didn't feel like they were making the relationships with kids. We had the first period, it wasn't enough, so we worked in an advisory period during the Unified Art block. In scheduling that, the schedule was so locked in that we can't place our students with their core teachers. They're cross-teamed oftentimes and they have two different teachers. So, if you're looking at a priority of relationships with kids, they've now expressed to me, we're not quite there. They want smaller classes where they can do, we talked about doing Genius Hour, I've encouraged them to do extension projects. We ask them to conference with kids every, in the midpoint, in the end of the marking period, so you're checking in. Their frustration now, which I've heard at team meetings, is that's great, but these aren't our kids. So, we don't fit now. These are all because of the schedule. So, that, it's just frustrating when you feel like you're almost there of doing what you want to do and then it's the schedule that, you know, you just, you can't find a way around it. If I wanted to create the advisory with the teachers, I had to take PLC time away. So, we prioritized it and we went with it this way. So, my conversations with teachers have been, there's just these little things. Last year, Unified Arts teachers had huge class sizes. So, we tweaked that block so that we were able to take and make sure they didn't have 350 kids at one time, but we cut that in half. So, we, you know, we did that. So, I would say since I've started, this has been a conversation of mine with teachers and I've expressed that to Dr. Perrin. And then we started talking, I said, I'm at my, kind of my end as far as my ideas with what, what to do.
See, I think, and follow up, and thank you. I think maybe with me, and you know how I'm straightforward, I think with me is you come on here and you want to be able to give these, the administrative staff, every tool necessary to do the right job and we trust them to make the decision on how they need to get to the end. At least that's how I see our function. I guess what bothers me right now is this is the 11th hour and it's the first time I'm hearing about it outside of the agenda. And I'm asked to make a vote tonight based upon the limited 15, 20 minute information that I just got.
There's no, there's no rush for this.
I'm not, and I'm okay with it, I just, I had to voice that because it's just not who I am. I'd like to at least be able to say, okay, I hear, I see that maybe. And what saves this for me is I remember, as her talking at our school visit, and sort of actually articulate what, basically what you're doing now. You were telling us some of the deficiencies and the changes you were trying to make. So, it's not, I'm not against it. I think I'm kind of hung up on the procedure and how this came about tonight. And that's, I think it was 11 o'clock, no, 9:22 this morning is the first time I actually, and part of that's my fault, I should have gone on when the agenda came out, but I wouldn't have been able to get the answers until tonight anyway.
Will we get a, I have a couple of questions. Will we be able to get, to finalize the vote? We're just earmarking funds right now. Can we have your assurance that when the time comes, that we'll have an agenda item to approve the expenses?
Yeah, we could, we could do that. I would think as long as we did that prior to the cancellation date where we wouldn't have any monetary obligation.
And then the second thing is, I agree with Al. We have the best administrators and principals I could imagine. And so, I would like, if it's possible, can we have some time? I would like for us to be made aware of where we're at now, the vision, goals, objectives, now, and where you want to go. Because I had this feeling, we might be going down a road in the dark. I don't know how far that road goes and I don't know what's that going to mean at the end of that road. So, if, like Kenny's comments about, okay, tell us where we're at now and tell us where we want to go. Because from my perspective right now, five years ago, we were in the top 5% in the state in our middle school. Our high school is in the top 10% in the state multiple years running. I don't, I'm reluctant to mess with that.
Goodbye.
I'm just reluctant to mess with that.
Can I ask some questions, Nancy? Some things have changed. The PA Core came about in 2014, that's made some impact on what we look at in our core subjects. There's a five-year tech plan, which is hand-in-hand with hybrid learning. And I hear you. And I hear you talking about P L Cs. Is there a connection between hybrid learning and P L Cs? And what's going on with P L C time that made it a priority? Can you clarify that and I have another question?
Yeah. We, this year, since the, the hybrid learning, I mean, six, seven, eight now, we're doing the hybrid learning. And the P L C is key to that collaboration. Because we have at least our grade level content, people are able to meet together and they are taking advantage of the coaches, they are collaborating, creating lessons together. And that's, I don't know how we would have done it without that collaborative time. Because they meet once in a four-day cycle and that is really their goal at this point. And the P L C's goals can change. Right now, we've kind of gone back to, they're really looking at, um, designing their lessons, collaborating on what this is going to look like, trying new things. I was just, you know, talking to some math teachers the other day who tried some station rotation and then got together and talked about what worked and didn't work. Um, so that's their goal right now. Eventually they'll get to, that'll kind of be in place and we'll start looking at the other goals of the P L C, like data analysis and, you know, uh, really planning what comes next. So to me, they, yes, they absolutely go hand-in-hand. I don't know how you would do any of this without that collaborative time.
So I hear you saying, and also is that the P L C time is letting you maximize this opportunity for the coaches that are being built into the system?
Yes.
Okay, second question. Um, STEM, and if you look at science, technology, engineering and math and keep them in silos, you are not truly in STEM, I hear you saying that.
Yes.
So what you're hoping for then is this cross-collaboration where perhaps it's science and technology could be a different sort of class. There's some really unique pairings of classes at the high school, like with, um, uh, A P Calculus and A P Physics, where they meet together in a longer block and then they separate out later. So can you talk about maybe some of your vision with, and your faculty vision with STEM?
Yes, I just met with Unified Arts teachers last week to talk about where this STEM was going. Because they're working through all these modules and they want to know where are we going with this? And as we were talking about this interdisciplinary connection, it's exciting to me that it wasn't me, but them who were saying, we want to know what the math teachers are doing, we want to know what the science teachers are doing. Because then if we know they're working on measurement and we can bring it in in these projects that we're creating. And they were the ones who questioned me and said, how are we going to change the culture of this building to be STEMI was what their words were. And I said, well, that, that's what our hope is, is that we get away from feeling like this Unified Arts Block is down on the wing and they're all by themselves and they do their own thing. Um, but start bringing in this collaboration. So again, you, you have to really look differently. And I understand, you know, I'm very proud of our middle school, I'm proud of our teachers and everything that we do. And thankfully, we're starting from an incredible base. And I have teachers who want to do this, they want to collaborate and they want to bring, um, you know, this vision in. So they want to break down the silos, they want to know, and right now we can't do that because there's, we're still in the silos of the schedule. They're still, still doing, they have to teach sixth, seventh and eighth grade because they have to, because kids have to have a place to go. So when, last year I presented the idea of, well, what if by eighth grade, kids weren't, kids were choosing which teacher they wanted to really pair up with based on their passion and they're doing some project. So we're scaffolding it through sixth grade, they're start, they're getting the content, seventh, they're picking an idea. By eighth grade, they're working on some problem and they're pairing with the teacher that matches with them. Instead of saying, okay, everybody's got to take two tech eds, everybody's got to take two arts because they don't all like that. So that's what I see down the road.
You started to talk about math customized learning. Where, where students, yes, they have to meet their core requirements, but then they can also begin to support their passions. My last question. Nancy, when you walk into a building and you look at a schedule, you can often see very quickly what drives the schedule. And it's usually the first thing you put down in the schedule. What's the first thing you're filling in the blocks right now in the current schedule?
When we looked at the schedule, it was all about a place for kids to go. You know, that's, it had to be, we have two hundred and forty kids. I'll speak, the U A Block was the most difficult part of the schedule to work on. And it was, every kid's got to have a place to go. And to me, that's not why you should make a schedule. You should not give every kid two tech ed courses because they have to have somewhere to go. They should get two tech ed if that's what you believe in and that's part of the vision of the school. So, um, the, the advisory period came about because we needed places for kids to go. And then we made it something worthwhile, which was very important. So that's not really how I prefer to design the schedule.
Thank you, Nancy.
Hi Nancy. For me, a big question is, will this better serve our students? And it's not just in the confines of the middle school curriculum, but will this better serve our students to be better ready for high school and the opportunities that are there? And then will that better serve, as they graduate from high school, serve them to be college-ready, work-ready, military-ready, or whatever? So I'm trying to see a bigger picture here, uh, and a continuum of progress that the students would go through. Can you just speak to that a little bit?
Sure. That's the whole goal would be, um, it's not about preparing for a test in my mind. Actually, it is exactly what you're saying, which is we have to start looking at how we're going to provide an experience for our kids that prepares them for the real world. And that all comes down to teaching them these skills of problem solving, you know. That, that's where that comes in. If we could start providing experiences where they're looking at real-world problems, that's again, what the STEM is about, is identifying problems in the community that are real-world and then starting to get your kids to think about how they're going to solve that, um, so that they're ready to go. Because we're preparing them, but we have to look at what the world that they're going to go into is going to look like. And it doesn't look like what it looks like even today. We probably can't predict what it will look like. So that's why we're trying to create an experience that, yes, prepares them for high school, but more importantly beyond, um, with those problem-solving and critical thinking skills, um, that I think we, we're doing a really nice job on, but I think we can be better.
And then my second question is, if we have a, a blueprint for a number of years through this consulting, how will that impact staffing? And by that, I mean, we just hired a social studies teacher that was here last, the last board meeting, who we wanted to keep at one point at the middle school before you were there. And because the schedule changed, we lost her at Meridian Springs and she went to Dallas Town and now she's back here. Well, that, and so it's a two-part question, whether it be a need for more staffing or will it provide a, a, a better, uh, stability in terms of staffing where we're not having to circle for one year and bring in somebody else the next year? You have more of a turnover.
We probably, we probably wouldn't know the answer to that question until they would go through, um, that process. And, you know, Chris and, you know, Nancy, um, you know, would work, would work through that. I'm certainly not going to do, um, the middle school schedule. You know, my, my goal was to hook her up with, with the right resources and support something that they've been trying to do for a couple of years and that's really it. I think, uh, you know, when I thought about, um, could we use Mike? I thought about, uh, when I did it at my middle school, uh, I, I used, um, my middle school reserve account in my middle, like I just did it. So when I was looking at our, uh, district reserve, thirty-eight thousand dollars, like, to me, like, these are the opportunities that come up that kind of align with the notion of, um, the things that we didn't plan for this year, but opportunities that arise, um, that we could take advantage of. So that's why we're here even having the conversation is because we're looking at the reserve and earmarking money out of the reserve to have the conversation. If, um, if there was a place in a superintendent's account where I had twenty thousand dollars, we'd have just signed the contract and worked with Mike. But we wanted to come, we wanted to come here because we think this would be a good use of the budget reserves. And, uh, so that's why, that's why we're bringing it now, being that it's so far away. We're not, you know, nine months away from even working with him. And they may decide that, you know, in the spring, they're not ready to work with him, so. But, hey, Mike, to get to your question, I think that you have a better idea of the staffing needs once you've kind of determined, you know, what the best route to go is. And then through the budget process that year, then, um, say it's an increase of a half teacher in this area and a half teacher in that area, we would come through and ask the board for the resources for those two half teachers then during the normal budget process for that, that fiscal year.
When you said visionary, that's why I said we're going down a road because it involves resources and maybe additional staffing. And I hope, of course, finding improvement in grade scores. But, uh, it also impacts the high school, that's what I talked about, we're going down this road. And if you're really talking about visionary, you're going to impact the high school. And so instead of spending ten thousand to fix the middle school, maybe we ought to look at spending more and look at our entire curriculum. I'm not opposed to an eighth grader having the second semester in the high school. You know? You know what I mean?
I think there's, uh, I think the conversation really is much, much broader than ten thousand five hundred dollars that we're being asked to earmark tonight. And I'm going to parrot a little bit of what Bill has been saying. I agree with you, I feel like this is an opportunity to really lay out the vision for the middle school and perhaps the high school as well because it, it does impact it. I would say that I am a fan of quality consultants, so you wouldn't have a problem with me there. However, because I really believe this is much broader than just having a consultant come in and look at the schedule, what I would really like to see before I would approve these funds finally, I suppose, I'd really like to see what in the schedule is going to be maximized? What in the current schedule will be minimized? I'll tell you that earlier in the conversation, I, I kind of surmised, I'm hoping incorrectly, that the U A may shrink a little bit, um, and that's something I certainly could not support. But, uh, but I really think it's important because this is a vision, this is much more than a simple scheduling. This is huge and I'd like us to do it and I'd like us to do it well. Dr. Perrin, did I hear you correctly that you're planning on having, um, a high school administrator, uh, out of the shadow or listen in and, and watch how this, uh, process unfolds? Can you talk a little bit more about what your goals might be to make that connection from middle school to high school?
Right, Nancy would put a team together to take a look at this and, um, she would include the high school administration as part of that, that team. There are challenges right now in terms of the way that their schedules interact. So part of doing this is to try to create some efficiencies where, um, the schedule works, uh, for kids. Um, so when, when they have some high school needs, some middle school needs, that, uh, that the schedule's not hurdle, that the schedule actually, uh, assists in providing the programs. So, um, so we'd include, Nancy would include the high school as part of that team. You know, Dr. Lay and Nancy and I are going to be meeting this week just to take a look at kind of, uh, you know, timeframe-wise, you know, what's it look like, what are the steps, you know, along the way in a process? I just didn't want to go too far down the rabbit hole with the two of, of those folks, um, without, um, without earmarking this so that we could schedule it in case we're at a place where it'd be beneficial at that, at that time.
I was just going to add, uh, Nancy, uh, after hearing you tonight, I'm, uh, uh, really confident that, and I'm happy to hear that you're not satisfied with what's happening now. And I think it was Jim Collins in his book, Good to Great, that the biggest enemy of great is good. And we're, we're pretty good, as Bill mentioned and others, uh, mentioned along the way. I don't think it's our role as a board to micromanage this process, but I think it is a big enough issue that, uh, I think it would be great for us to be informed along the way as you go down this journey. And, uh, I would love to hear more about, uh, you know, those priorities that you spoke about and, uh, maybe, uh, you know, a little bit more detail to some regard. But I do think the middle school, that age level of early adolescents, uh, when it's a time where we have a incredible opportunity to have a major impact in a positive way on these kids. And so I commend you for, you know, what you're doing in that regard. Yeah, so I, I just, I would love for us to be, as a board, just, uh, in tune with and informed on, uh, you know, how the journey is going and, uh, those priorities and so on. And if, uh, you're okay with it, maybe even throw out a few ideas to you from time to time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The age is actually a lot of fun. Um, I think Nancy, I probably gravitated towards, uh, working in buildings where you got that age just because, uh, you know, they're truly a different, uh, have different needs and different strengths and challenges. But, uh, there's nothing like working with middle schoolers. And I think that, uh, you know, the end, the end result is hopefully, uh, something that, that launches the district into the next, you know, decade or so, doing the kinds of things that they would like to do with the middle school.
Dr. Perrin, uh, I completely agree, the schedule needs to, for student success, number one. But I also hope that any kind of schedule change would take into account faculty's needs as well. I know we have several faculty who teach both at the high school and the middle school and they're running back and forth between the buildings. I've never heard a complaint from any of them, but my observation is, I'm not sure, uh, how healthy that is for a faculty member, so I'm hopeful that if this brings up any kind of conversation about staffing, that is something that could be considered.
Yeah, absolutely, that would be, that would be a part of that investigation because you try to make it as efficient, um, as possible. Travel time would help anybody, so.
So as we move forward then, these, these changes, and I envision those go the defense significantly, that coming back before the board, is that an arbitrary decision you'll make?
Um, it won't ever be arbitrary, um.
Not the right word, I'm just trying to, not having been through this.
Is it a Jason decision or is it?
I don't know.
That's a question. Yeah, all right. The, um, the, uh, the items that require board action would be changes in staffing. So if, so if, uh, we come, if we come up with a schedule that says, oh, we need another half world language teacher or we need another whatever, those positions would come, uh, before the board as part of the budget. Scheduling itself is really an administrative function. So, um, so what Nancy does within the time of the day is really, um, is really kind of administrative, administrative decision, um, but, uh.
Right, and I'm not suggesting that I want to resourcing. What I'm really getting around to is that a year and a half from now, all of a sudden, a budgetary item is four new teachers.
Or it may look differently where there's shifting.
We understand, but we're already. Yeah, tens of thousands of dollars in producing a new schedule. And all of a sudden we find ourselves locked in and we have to hire four new teachers.
And we're not, or we're looking at how they.
Again, again.
So further resourcing would come to the board, yes.
That's why I'd, that's why I'd like us to consider a wider view right now about the potential. And I'd like people like Ann Baum brought in and Chris Lay, and I'd like Jeremy Lust get involved. Because I, again, I think we're heading down a road, we're doing a transformation. There's a possibility here, but you're getting ready to do a transform, we've hired all the parts. Now we're sitting there and saying, okay, now we're looking at the schedule and we're saying, we need to fix this because there's too many rubbing parts. Oh, wow. That's a bigger effort. We're not, we're not chimping a period here. We're impacting the curriculum across the board. And we're at, at that point where we can do that and look forward, it's way beyond the middle school.
They can be a part of everything.
Well, I think you have to make sure that, I'm not sure how this, this is going to look if it happens, but just including an administrator from the high school, I'm not sure that that's going to preclude your middle school effort from, you know, breaking something that you don't recognize right off at, at the high school, you know, as the kids move to, to the high school and you say, whoops.
I think it would go beyond just a representative. I mean, they communicate pretty much on a daily basis, every other day. So they're almost both actually already aware of what the challenges are at each one of those levels. And we meet as a secondary team, as well with Dr. Lay and the secondary principals. So, so I think that, you know, we certainly keep an eye on the boss. As Bill mentioned, when looking at kind of the six to 12, you know, overall scheduled itself. Because if there are some, if there are ways that we can improve the quality of life for a kid by tweaking the schedule, you know, certainly we're going to do it. And if it would take any more resourcing at all in terms of people or those kinds of things, we'd bring it back to the board for approval.
Absolutely.
I hate to invest four years of effort to find out. We should have brought the high school in on day two.
Is the question, or the point you're making, Bill, that maybe this effort also needs to be inclusive of the high school scheduling?
Sure.
It may even go beyond the high school. Lisa Brock and James Geddes, she is known for mass customized learning. She may be making some changes now that may impact how the students who leave James Geddes proceed to the middle school in the future. So there's, there are large conversations, I'm sure, that will be a part of the admin cabinet 18 discussions that come about from this. I don't think it's going to be in a, in a silo.
It may not be physical. I go back to my first grader that we saw last year at Lincoln. By the time that person gets to eighth grade, they're going to be doing high school stuff. And I need, we all need to challenge that child. Every child needs to be challenged every single day. And if I've got 30 kids in eighth grade that can be doing high school stuff, whether you bring the teacher to the middle school, I don't care. But that kid deserves to be challenged. There's a lot of different ways to approach this. But all I'm suggesting is you can't do it in isolation and then say, "Oh gee, we should have done it." Because that's what you're doing right now.
I'd add two things. Chris, you've been very quiet. Any thoughts you'd like to add to the conversation?
Well, certainly the idea of mass customized learning as, you know, a next step for hybrid. And we certainly brought Lisa in with that idea. And it's already had to be with Nancy early in her hiring, just to discuss things philosophically, not specifically. And then the addition of the STEM field. So all these are just ways that we are looking to transform learning opportunities for our students. Nancy articulated it well. So it's not, we've kind of worked on elementary and high school. Now we're kind of moving into the middle, if you will. But certainly, we send elementary kids to the middle school for content learning as well. I mean, we got very crazy this year when kids whose parents don't want them to go to high school. So we're already giving some of this. We just want to expand the opportunities and look at the easiest way to do it. So it's not troubleshooting each time we have an outlier go up. So all those people will be present at the table and part of the conversation. And I've worked with this down there as well. And it's transformational when you are asked certain questions and you realize, wow, we never thought about it that way. So we have similar, I've had experience. And I still have members of certain things that we didn't, we said, that if somebody made them, that was probably, you'd have to go now.
Dr. Perrin, somebody had asked you a bit ago, and I forget who asked the question, if this is, you know, if this is it, or if this is, before we actually expend the funds, there's going to be another vote? As I read this action item, this is one and done.
Is this set aside?
That's not how, that's not how it's written. It's a request to utilize approximately $10,500 of the budget reserve, a fund to provide funds for school scheduling associates to serve as a consultant to the middle school administration in reference to the master schedule. So it's not just setting aside funds in case we decide to do it. This is basically approving the funds to do it, the way it's written. Am I, have I got that right, Brad?
I would say that I've already heard Dr. Perrin say we would bring that back to another vote before we bring him on site. If I heard that right, that would mean that there would be another vote potential for the board before Mr. Evans would be brought on site to do the board. So whether or not, the perception that this language doesn't require it, I think word spoken, and I think Dr. Perrin's already answered in the affirmative that we bring it back to another vote.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the timeline. I always worry about how did Nancy be able to schedule in period? But, so we can sit either way.
I'm with you. I'm going to defer to Nancy and any administrative staff for, on everything. I mean, it just am. We put her, we put you in place, not literally, to make those decisions. I just would kind of, I'm meckling, Bill, hitting the home here. I would, I don't want to sit here a year and a half from now, somebody drop another four personnel request on us. Or like Bill said, an effect and a ripple effect to the high school. I don't want to do that. This one caught me off-guard a little bit. And if, quite honestly, if Nancy would have come into here last month and said this, I don't know that I'd have a question tonight. I mean, she articulated everything right, and I knew she was already looking at that. So I think I'm going to make a motion that we accept that, we approve that. We have a second, we can vote after that.
I already have a motion and a second. We're in the discussion part, but are we, is there any more discussion? We had quite a bit of discussion. Nancy, I do appreciate your, being here and answering the questions that the board had. I think one of the things that the board is looking at is that, and I agree with Bill, is that it's not just an isolated middle school. That we have the high school involved and even elementary to some point. That we look, we look at the big picture. And we have some headlights going down that road, as Bill said. I think we, as a board, would be more comfortable knowing that all the players will be involved in this.
Yeah, I think that we could take a look at that. And if involving other organizational levels changes that price, we'll come back to you. I think Mike's probably shrewd enough to not schedule, to not schedule a K-12 district for a middle school price. He would, if he wasn't good at what he does, he wouldn't be first available in June. At this point, he'd be available next Thursday, you know?
The fact that Nancy may get, looking at this schedule, what she believes is beneficial to the middle school. And I'm not completely sold that what's beneficial to the middle school is going to greatly harm the high school. Because that potential there, as Bill said, it is. I'm not, unless I'm reading it wrong, I'm looking at a vision that was outlined when we met during our walkthrough. And what I've heard tonight is, is the person that knows what difficulties is, is Nancy. And I think I just comfortable moving in that direction. I just don't want to go down, whole way down the hole and then all of a sudden get a drop on an agenda item next time. I think that's where my, my rub is at.
Okay. Any more discussion, comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll take the vote on the motion as it's written. Mike?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes. The act concludes all the business items for tonight. Anything to go to the order?
Just a quick question for Dr. Perrin. Just looking at the enrollment information, very interesting.
I noticed that Franklin.
At Franklin Township, our K classes are 23, 24, 22. Are, are K teachers keeping their head above water over there? That just, that's at a point where I'm starting to get a little concerned.
Yes. I've been over there several times over the past couple of weeks. And Dr. Lay is in contact as well with the principal. But, you know, anywhere where we watch those, those numbers on this class size, some will be.
I see in first grade, the numbers are very reasonable, the student-teacher ratio. But I guess we might have a little bit of a bubble there.
And they have full-time pairs in the room.
Oh, good.
And it's, you know, one of the things I always, saw it more than I knew it was to begin with, but people always get really wrapped around those numbers. And what's more important than the number is really the makeup of the class. You can have, you can have a makeup in a class of 22, that can be really, really challenging. And then you can have a makeup where you've got 26 and it can be not so challenging. So we kind of, we kind of look at all those things whenever we're considering things like adding support, like pairs and those kinds of things. But, but it's, we want, the numbers are what cause us to have the conversation. Then we look at the other variables.
Grandson Cooper is with Ms. Lust out at Lincoln. And my fear was, if there were 24 Coopers, we'd be in trouble.
Six years ago, we were talking about computers. And whether or not they should be on a rack, brought in temporarily into the classroom. Then we started talking about curriculum. And I, and I think we're back six years ago. We don't know where this road is going to go, but I'm excited about it. You know, this, this could be really good. Got to be careful.
Also, just the board members, just a reminder of the sixth grade camp coming up on October 10th to the 12th. I know that Kathy, Bill and I and Jason went up last year together. And we spent some time going around to the different classes, offerings, and had dinner with the kids. And it was a fun time, it was a great time. Kids are really, so if you have a chance, you know, we can carpool or.
Are you going to send something on one day you guys are going on?
Yeah, we'll put something out.
I mean, I go every year.
Yeah, we'll have to make it after, well, I know some, because you can go up evening too.
Right, I mean, I go up every year because somebody forgets something and it's a phone call.
Okay, all right.
Do we, we pay extra for no rain this year, Nancy?
God, two years of rain. I mean, I'm trying.
Well, let's hope it's over, buddy.
I know.
All right, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 15th at 7:00. See you then.